Okay, folks. The first packet of bids for dog and cat kennels comes from Stone Mountain Pet Products. And the first bid, and I'll try to read these off so they make sense, is for $215,179.52. It's for the dog holding cages, specifically, dog holding cages, $215,179.52. Again, that's from Stone Mountain Pet Products. For the dog quarantine and isolation cages, remember, they are separate, comes out to $59,646.46. For the cat holding cages, which are separate from dog and in the quarantine, comes out to For your cat quarantine and isolation cages, comes out to $17,862. Again, that's for cat quarantine and isolation cages, $17,862. Second sheet I'm reading off from them, I'll make sure it's not a duplicate. And it is. They gave us three copies of that bid proposal. Again, that company was Stone Mountain Pet Products. Comes from TriStar Medals of Boyd, Texas. Total, first total, comes out to $322,673.
Repeat that?
$322,000, sorry, $322,673. No cents, $322,673. And that looks like they're trying to wrap everything together. They have additional pages, and I'm gonna read what those are comprised of. The dog holding cages. It includes the dog quarantine and isolation cages. The cat quarantine and isolation cages. The cat holding cages. So, yeah, they have it all wrapped up into that figure of $322,673. Okay, sorry, it's just worded a little bit differently than previous bid. And again, that is TriStar Vet. With brochures. Got one with that, in public. Third bid is from, three copies of their bid, Gator Kennels out of Loveland, Colorado.
Slipping on my job.
No, no, I got it, I got it. I have the bid documents from them. Again, Gator Kennels. I worked through the pages and documents, which has the certificate. It has some of their quote paperwork. And for dog holding cages, these are broke down separately again, unlike the previous one. Dog holding cages, their quote was $109,896. $109,896 for dog holding cages. Dog quarantine and isolation cages at $32,765.50. That's dog quarantine and isolation, $32,765.50. Cat holding cages at $22,800, $22,800. Cat holding cages. Moving on to cat quarantine and isolation cages, $24,510.
Well, I think this is.
Yeah, these are copies. I'll make sure that these are not different.
Yeah.
That is the original, and this should just be, every single bid came in with three copies as provided.
Okay.
Just to make the public.
Okay, good deal. All right.
And this is VSM Medical. We have a fourth. Mr. Givens is happy to know, he actually did get bids in.
What was that, some bid?
VSS Medical.
Got it.
They are from, almost at a mountain home, Wilmington, Wilmington, Delaware. Wilmington, Delaware, folks. VSS Medical. Broken up into different items again. First is the dog holding cages at $257,008.40. Never trust a whole nothing, right? The second item is the dog quarantine and isolation cages at $71,369.70. Next item for them is cat holding cages at $15,078, $15,078. Cat holding cages. Last item for their bid is cat quarantine and isolation cages at $10,926. Again, that's VSS Medical out of Wilmington, Delaware. I thank them for their bids. Includes bids.
Okay. I move that we receive these bids.
Second?
I've had a motion to second to receive the bids as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. And, who are we turning these over to? You ready?
We're supposed to be a committee, isn't there?
Yeah.
We're in the committee, but I'd like for him to hang on to them. The committee will meet. I know this is still important, to finish this, we have to have this before you can be operational. But with the rain, I think we have a little more time to wait before the committee meets.
Okay.
Like after next week. Thank you.
Should one copy go to the county clerk and record it?
Yes.
Yes.
Very smart. Thank you.
Let's leave those to county clerk, and then we're gonna do you.
That's what I recall. Normally, the process, they go to the county clerk. And they can be officially, anyway.
Next item on the agenda is item 1.10. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to allow Kirk County properties located at 550 Earl Garrett and 600 Earl Garrett to be used as a central location to assist citizens suffering from the flooding disaster and for storage. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, we've had a lot of requests, as y'all can imagine, it's been expressed by several of the commissioners up here, but every church, every available space, airport, all of them, anything we can have for storage or for services to be provided, we're filling up as fast as we can get. And so, the county does have, I think it's the second floor available at 550 Earl Garrett, and we've got 600 Earl Garrett right next to it that's not, the judge informed us, not set up appropriately for.
It has to do with ADA compliance.
Right.
But 550 is finished out.
But.
But we just can't invite the public into something that doesn't, it's not ADA compliant.
Whenever this, whenever this scene is over, we're not sure what we're gonna have. Tiedem's gonna work with us very closely to move, move all these resources out, probably to the next disaster, whatever we have to do there. But they've got a program, we're working real closely with them. We hope we don't end up with a lot of overage, but we have to have somewhere to put stuff if we do. And so, what I would like, the permission to be able to use 600 Earl Garrett for that, and 550 possibly for some office setups at the time for.
Various agencies and.
For agencies to need.
Public services.
Right.
I believe Small Business Association is coming, they were looking for a space, they found space elsewhere, not at 550, but they are coming to help out.
Right.
I will say, at 600, I mean, you might talk with Shane and see if the AC works, because it may not. And depending on what gets stored there, you might need some AC function.
I talked to Tracy, is she still in here? No, I talked to Tracy, and didn't you say it's environmentally controlled over there at 600?
Well, I assumed it was.
I wouldn't assume.
We'll just confirm.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we'll find out what we need, but from the court, I need permission to be able to use those buildings.
Is it gonna be climate-controlled or hot, one or the other?
Right, there you go.
Yeah. It's average.
And along those lines, we're, we're looking for different places. I mean, if somebody knows something we don't know of, as far as it might work for storage or anything like that, or an open field or something for equipment or whatever, I mean, we'd file it away, and we're always looking for something. And y'all are our eyes and ears out there, you know, we can't be everywhere.
So I'd like to make this in the form of a motion.
Of course.
Yeah. I'll move that the court authorize Commissioner Jones to utilize office space available at 550 Earl Garrett or storage space available at 600 Earl Garrett as she.
As available.
As available. There you go. Good work.
Got a motion to second? Any discussion? No, we don't have a second yet, you hear the second?
I made a motion.
Okay, you have the second.
No, I made the motion.
Oh, well, I already made one, but go ahead.
Oh, did you?
But I'm still the second. That's okay. Well, I didn't realize.
I thought I recalled saying I'm putting this in the form of a motion.
You did?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
If and when it starts being used, you will need to get with me so I can make sure that all of the costs involved with that are included in the theme of the first.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thanks. Good catch.
And if we need an agreement with whatever entities might use 550 Earl Garrett, let me know, and I'll get that for you when we hit the button.
Okay.
And just to clarify, so the public, we have, the available space we have at 550 is committed for adult probation. This is just something that's temporary, to get us to the next board.
Yeah, but if they wanted to damage some of that space, that might happen.
Any other discussion? Help with some grant money.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.11. Consider discuss and take, take update on matters related to the HCESRPC, Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission, which replaces.
Yep. Not a lot to report, but this is intended to be a, a regular item, and especially to allow discussion and input from the public. But we had a board meeting scheduled for Monday, July 7th, and it was canceled, as you can imagine. Kendall County, they were busy, we were busy, so, and it has not been rescheduled. So just kind of pay attention to the, the website, we'll try to get information out to interested parties whenever it gets rescheduled. Certainly have not received any kind of response to our various requests to coordinate from Public Utilities Commission or LCP. I was invited to speak at the Rotary Club this Wednesday to talk about battery energy storage system, and I'm gonna make every attempt to go ahead and do that. And then, well, the next agenda item can, will be self-explanatory, so.
So that was really the.
That's all I've got.
That's the report.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay.
So we'll move on. Any questions or discussions? The only question. Doesn't look like it. Okay.
Moving on to item 1.12. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request from Gillespie County to join Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
And this is an item, we have received a formal request in the form of a letter, including a couple resolutions from Gillespie County Judge, Judge Daniel.
Jones.
I'm sorry, Daniel Jones. That's where I was confused.
It was close.
Yeah, I got the first name, come on. Anyway, and of course, they can't be here because they have Commissioner's Court at the same time on Mondays, just as we do. But in discussing it with them, and I'm not sure which two, if we agree to allow them to join the commission, who they will nominate, but I know that Judge Jones and Commissioner Cromer have been involved, they have met with Commissioner Holt and myself one or two times, and I think they have a, a keen interest. They have the same problem with battery energy storage systems. In fact, the one at Harper is probably further along than any, anywhere else. And I think there is strength in numbers or area in this case, and I would recommend that this court consider, including Gillespie County, in our Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
Is that a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that this court approve the Gillespie County joining the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission.
Second.
And motion and second?
And of course, we, they have already agreed, they're not gonna try to modify our ILA or our bylaws. They, they understand that other than the names changing.
I've talked to Judge Jones.
Yeah.
He just wants to accept what we have.
Yes, and so, I think it's an easy fix for the county attorney to modify those two documents a little bit to.
Any thoughts?
Okay, anyway.
Counsel to do that.
I think it probably needs to be in the form of an addendum rather than a new contract.
Well, whatever, but it should be easy. They don't want to change anything other than where it's appropriate for their inclusion.
There's some discussion opportunity?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Just for the public to understand, this northern loop that comes from the Mountain Home substation goes right up to this Harper substation, and then it goes all the way and ends off on Comfort. That's the reason we think it is important. As electricity flows, it are two loops, one comes from Bandera up to Comfort, and this is the northern loop. So that's why we believe it's important to have Gillespie, because we are tied to that electricity whether we like it or not.
There we go.
I felt like they should have been part of it from the beginning.
Right.
And that's the reason I.
And look, I'll say, this is all subject to Kendall County. They would have to approve all this as well. I believe they will.
All right. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to 1.13. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding whether the designated officer, the tax collector, should calculate the voter approval rate for Kirk County lateral roads and the Lake Endrum Estates Road District taxing entities in the matter as noted in 26.042 of the Texas Property Tax Code. This is due to the entities being located in an area declared a disaster area by the governor or by the President of the United States. Mr. Reeves?
Good morning, gentlemen. I know the last thing anybody, including myself, wants to talk about is property taxes at this time, but after the events of July 4th, section 26.042 A and G of the Texas Property Code allows for a taxing entity such as the ones listed in the agenda to calculate its voter approval tax rate as a special taxing unit. This would allow the individual who calculates the tax rate, being myself, and the voter approval rate for maintenance and operations to calculate the rate using 8% rather than 3.5% over the known new revenue rate. The difference is not to pad a budget or anything like that, it's for the unforeseen costs that have arisen out of the disaster. I can only calculate that if I get your approval. That doesn't mean the tax rate will go up that much, that's gonna be left to the five of you as the budget process rolls around. Before you, you have a copy of the proposed court order, which was developed by our outside counsel who represents us in property tax matters, and it has been sent to Ms. Stebbins, who has reviewed and approved the wording. I'm open for discussion. This doesn't mean we're raising taxes, but I can only calculate it using this disaster rate, if authorized by the court, and I will begin the calculations regardless which way you tell me to go before the next Commissioner's Court meeting. That's why I'm before you today.
I'm gonna go ahead and take the initiative to make a motion to approve you to do that. You, and Ms. Shelton and I have sat down and talked about this. Our whole budget period is being eroded away, literally. And the sooner, we gotta have somebody that's on top of this, and you're the best person to do it, Bob, so.
Second.
My motion is for you to do it. Second. Any discussion? One thing I wanted to clarify about it, and I'm just talking about the takeaway that I had when, when the three of us met. The reason that it's 8% instead of the usual 3.5%, which is, if you do, if you raise it more than 3.5%, you gotta get voter approval.
That's correct.
Okay? They raise it when you have disasters like this. And it's more cash flow management. We're gonna have to pay for this stuff, and a lot of this is gonna be reimbursed by FEMA. And for those of you who, I don't mean, FEMA's, they're here, I'm thankful they're here, but they're slow. And the last time we had a big FEMA project, it, it took us, what, three years? At least two, if not three years, before we got reimbursed. And so, with that, we have to be able to at least pay the contractors now, and then get reimbursed later, so.
That's amazing, they're telling me how fast they're moving.
Well, I hope they do.
No, I believe you, I know, I know, I'm just saying, that's.
When we did, when we did some roads, we, we had a harder time.
Yeah.
But we need to have somebody on top of it, and you're the best person for the county to do this, Bob, in my opinion.
Does your motion include that you can sign it, Judge?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I've got, people tell me to sign all kinds of things these days.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to item 1.14. It's discussion regarding your proposed department requested budgets and tax rate. Okay, what this is, is Ken and I are working on a recommended budget, and we postponed some things that we were gonna do today, including that afternoon workshop, because we haven't been able to do it. And so what I wanted to do was to reach out to you commissioners with the departments that, and offices that you oversee as part of your liaison responsibility, to go back to the big fat white notebook that we have, and, and look at your departments and see what kind of recommendations you can make to us to kind of short-circuit this thing so we know where the department is and where you are as a commissioner on this court with regard to the people that you liaise with. And so, and I just do, for example, animal services would be Commissioner Holt, human resources and indigent services would be Commissioner Holt, information technology is Commissioner Holt, sorry. Moving on to OSSF and environmental would be Mr. Paces, road bridge would be Commissioner Harris, 550 and 600 Earl Garrett would be Paces, Hill Country Youth Event Center would be Harris, and volunteer fire department would be Paces. And anything you can do to weigh in and help them, I would appreciate it. What I'm asking you to do is take a look at who you oversee, and with regard to the sheriff's office, I'm working with that, I'm working with them directly, but make recommendations back to us, and that would be helpful rather than us trying to figure out what to do with the people that you, you work with.
Right.
That's just a request.
And the sheriff's department has already worked up some stuff.
Oh, we're, we're working.
Yeah.
We got all kinds of stuff.
Right.
Okay, so that was more informational. 115 is to consider discuss and take appropriate action to appoint Lisa Walter as the Kirk County Web Accessibility Coordinator. And that is a, actually kind of an expanded job description, because that's what, one of the things that she's doing for us.
Is she doing that already?
She is. Yes, she is.
But it's not in her job description, and so we put it on the agenda so she's authorized to do it.
Right. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second, to appoint Ms. Walter as the Kirk County Web Accessibility Coordinator as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.16. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to surplus two bench chairs from the district judges' courtrooms. Ms. Shelton.
Yes, there are two bench chairs that need surplusing.
I move for approval.
Okay, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the chairs as surplus as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, you don't need to go anywhere. We'll move on to the approval agenda. Item 2.1, our budget amendments.
Yes, you have non-budget adjustments in front of you, most of these are line item transfers between the same department or the same department head. There is one where we're using insurance proceeds.
Being what?
The insurance proceeds came in, and so we're adding the amount of the proceeds to the expense so that that amount can be expended.
I move for approval.
I second. Got a motion and second to approve the budget amendment as presented. Any discussion? In favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.2, pay bills.
Yes, invoices for your consideration today, $2,946,445.40.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and second to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, late bills.
There are not any.
2.4, auditor reports.
There are not any.
Thank you. Item 2.5, monthly reports.
Yes, for June 2025, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Environmental Health OSSF Director Ashley Batters, County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford, County Auditor's Office, County Auditor Tanya Shelton, Constable, Constable Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct 1, Constable Kyle Snyder, Precinct 2, Constable Paul Gonzalez, Precinct 3, Constable Brad Ryder, Precinct 4, Justice of the Peace Judge Missy French, Precinct 1, Judge J.R. Horn, Precinct 2, Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct 4. I move for approval.
Got a second?
Yes.
Got a motion and second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah. On four? You had, who?
On what? I didn't have.
Judge Mitchell's three.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said, you said, yeah, she should have been three, I thought he said four.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Did I?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was thinking we were.
That's why I was stopping.
We know what number she is.
Right, I just want to make sure it's correct on the record.
Yeah, I just misread it. I was thinking about four.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct the record.
A little, I guess.
Yes, sir, we're with you. Okay.
Yeah.
With that, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Move on to item 2.6, which are court orders. I've reviewed court orders from June 23 of this year and also July 7. The June 23s are numbered 41332 through 41366. That's 34 orders. They all seem to be in order to me, and on the July 7, we just have two, which are 41367 and 41368. And I recommend approval of these orders.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, with that, we move on to the information agenda. 3.1, our status reports from department heads. A.I.T., who has been very busy over at the Youth Event Center.
Yes, sir. So in light of all of the activity at the Ag Barn and everything else throughout the county, our, our Office 365 migration was supposed to happen next Monday, I'm actually gonna push that back a week. So after having spent last week watching the battle rhythm slowly normalize, and especially over the weekend, how it kind of flattened out, I, I don't want it to jump on anybody's toes this next week or these next two weeks. So we're gonna push it back one week to really kind of let everything kind of normalize out, make sure that that battle rhythm is, is running as smoothly as possible before we do make this migration. Now, I know a question might come up, why only a week? It's because the equipment that we're utilizing is dying quickly. So we need to make this migration happen. I believe we have the ability to. I believe we have the ability to extend it one more week, but we need to push it back. So more informational than, than anything else, but in light of everything that's happened, we're going to put, put a pause on it for an extra week.
And let me just say, for those of you that have not heard the term battle rhythm, I hadn't heard probably in forty years or so since I was discharged from the Army, but that's what's going on over there. It's a battle rhythm, and they're moving and shaking.
Yes, sir. We've got it normalized from, from the I.T. side of it. Everything's kind of flattened out. I haven't made it over there yet this morning, but I, I do intend to go just walk through and make sure that everybody's, everything's still operating as.
And, and because we haven't been able to talk, you're his liaison. I've made some requests of him that he'll need to transfer over to you. I'm preparing, I know, I cheated. I know. But, but, but we need, that is our, that's our center there, and there's some upgrading that needs to be done.
I would agree.
Other than what he's laid out?
Do what?
First of all, the two of you can tap out. We don't need to be part of it.
Right, right.
Both of you can tell him anything you want, and he can tell the other.
Right.
That's the way, that's the way you work the open M.I.C.
But I've been working through him to, and so he should be getting stuff to you.
Give him backwards, man. I know, and I, I assume as we scale down the larger E.O.C. into something that's more permanent and manageable over there that doesn't encumber our large spaces, which we may need to get back eventually, that that will be your priority is to make that work, especially with some of the folks that we have here to assist you.
Yeah, the initial wayback was a bit of a challenge, especially with all the different vendors coming in, but that's society dramatically, and we're full steam ahead, and we're operating so.
Yes, and Commissioner Harris and I looked at a suitable facility, but they're going to have to decide where that's going to be for the permanent in the future.
Which is why I'm staying out of that. That's where I was, I was.
Yeah, I figured. Thank you.
But I wasn't trying to step on your toes. I just wanted you to know. Talk to him.
These are unusual times.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item is three point two, status reports from elected officials. Got a couple elected officials?
Yeah, first, just what I've been saying. When you ask Cory, excuse me, Judge?
You get any sleep?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, a little bit. But Cory has been amazing. I sat across from him for the first week. I mean, what he had to work with, it was amazing. I mean, I think that Ag Barn's tapped out, and I'll tell you what. There were some tempers probably flew in between the time, not between me and him, but just, you know, everybody's kind of tired and short-tempered, but they've done a great job. They've had somebody out there the whole time. You know, like I said, I sat across from him a week. I've sent someone to the office to prepare for some hearings I'll probably be having to go to in the near future. But what I want to make the court aware of is, I told you all we had twenty-two-hundred assets, and we do. We have everything, everything and anything we need right now. My fear, I just want to make the court aware, like plant that seed, Commissioner Holt, is, is it in the fut, they will, they will leave at some time, whether it be two months to six months. You know, this will all lie on Kirk County, a majority of it, to, to take from there and move on and get some closure, do some different things. So I wanted to make you aware, I mean, we're pretty much stretched out. An example, you know, we're in the budget process. I truly don't know what all I need. Example is, you know, there's a lot of found property out there. We're kind of trying to work through that. We're going to work through the county attorney's office. You know, we do already have people bringing to our office. We do not have the facilities for that. I have contacted E.O.C. and requested four forty-foot climate-controlled storage units. It's a very slow process, but you know, I'm hoping I can get some, we'll put it in our office, but you know, the, the property that is brought, you know, we'll have to hold and deal with that, work it out. But you know, as far as us and I'm investigators, I see them tapped out, I mean, for the next year. I mean, there, there's a lot of stuff I don't want to get discussion.